Okay, we'll get started in just a moment.
I think we are.
Good evening, and welcome to the February 22nd, 2016 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bealy?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Ogless and Ms. Saunders.
Thank you. Just for the record, in the absence of Ms. Ogless, Mr. Bealy will be a voting member this evening, and I understand that Ms. Saunders will be here shortly, but we do have a quorum for getting the meeting started. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the February 1st, 2016 meeting.
Still moving, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion?
All in favor.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Quick housekeeping note, item number five, Ballantine Development, has been tabled at the request of the applicant. The next item, number four, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive input regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the Scarborough Zoning Ordinance, to allow non-conforming structures to be elevated to meet floodplain requirements. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's an item that actually our zoning administrator, working with the Board of Appeals, has identified and brought forth. Essentially, there currently exists a conflict between our zoning ordinance and our floodplain management ordinance, and particularly where the two mostly coincide, sort of in our coastal areas. Essentially, our zoning ordinance states that non-conforming buildings are not allowed to be expanded, enlarged, or, in this instance, increased in height unless they receive a variance from the Board of Appeals, while, at the same time, our floodplain management ordinance actually requires structures to be elevated at least one foot above base flood elevation if the building is being invested in up to or over 50% of the value of the structure. So really, what this is talking about is if someone wants to do interior improvements to their structure, a non-conforming structure, that exceeds 50% of the value, we have one ordinance that says that structure must go up a foot, or at least one foot above base flood elevation, whatever that height is. Another ordinance that says, well, you can't do that without going through our Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance, to get a variance, has sort of a high standard, a high threshold, to get that. So there's this duality going on that our Board of Appeals has had to deal with. So essentially, the amendment aims to address and eliminate that conflict by expressly allowing non-conforming buildings to be elevated to meet the floodplain standards without having to go through the Board of Appeals process. I will note that this is really all about sort of those interior structural changes I talked about. If someone's looking to do exterior additions, expand the building in any way, that would still trigger that Board of Appeals review process. And so that's what the language is primarily about.
Thanks, Jay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and say anything about this, just introduce yourself, give your address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please. I'll open the hearing. We have any takers? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And we'll turn to board discussion. Mike, would you like to start off?
I have nothing to add. It's pretty straightforward, and thank you for cleaning up that discrepancy and conflict. I'm in favor of it.
Nick, anything?
Nothing to add.
Ron?
Good.
All right. Roger?
Fine.
Okay, great. Well, we're off to a running start. Nothing here either. This is pretty straightforward. It's good cleanup. As staff's memo noted, this was something that came up as part of a process that the Long Range Planning Committee recently went through, focused on Higgins Beach, but it applies to some other areas as well. And I think it's just a good common sense revision. So, thanks, Jay.
Okay. And I'll just touch on, the next step in the process is that we'll go back to our town council for their public hearing and second reading on the item, so folks do have additional opportunities to speak and say.
And just for the record, the board is clearly sending forward a positive sentiment on this. Thanks. As I mentioned before, item number five was tabled. Item number six, M&amp;R Holdings LLC requests site plan amendment review for 6th Washington Avenue, Assessors Map R62, Lot 24. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, the applicant's before the board to seek an expansion of the parking field for a previously developed site within the industrial district at 6th Washington Avenue. As board members will note, this item was before you, I think it was back in December as a sketch plan. The site is actually also encumbered by some shoreline zoning overlay district, and so there was some discussion that we had around that, particularly given that when the site was originally approved, that shoreline overlay area was actually in resource protection. So there's a 1987, I believe, subdivision plan that has a DEP condition approval note on it that states there should be no disturbance of that area. Well, our local ordinance, as I just referenced, has changed in the years, and I'm not sure when that change occurred. It's been at least probably eight years, if not many more than that at this time. So the proposed expansion is permitted within the local ordinances, so there's just a question about the DEP condition, which I know the applicant has begun to have some discussions with the DEP, and I'm sure we'll provide the board with a bit more on that as they are able. Let's see, you received staff comments, as well as comments from Woodard and Kern, our peer review engineers. Woodard and Kern, I think, was generally comfortable with the direction of stormwater approach on this. There's a few details regarding restoration and stabilization of the site to be addressed as this moves forward, but those are items that we think could be dealt with as a condition of approval if the board were so inclined. Staff comments also touched on issues in terms of lighting. We did have a question, I think it might have come up also at sketch plan, about two of the proposed parking spaces, as well as some standard notes. One item that staff didn't address in our comments is detailing in terms of there's a dumpster pad. Site plan ordinance typically seeks to have dumpster pads enclosed, and at this time, the applicant is not proposing any enclosures, and so I'm sure they will talk to you about that as well. With that, I will turn it back to you. I will note that we have, depending on the board's discussion tonight, we have drafted a motion for board consideration with some conditions and/or waivers depending on the board's determination on the item. So with that, I turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nancy St. Clair with St. Clair Associates. The last time we were here before you folks was back in early December. At the time, we presented a sketch plan for proposed parking improvements for our piece of property owned by M&amp;R Holdings LLC. It's a site in the industrial park. There's an existing building on the property now. We're not proposing any expansions to the building, just an improvement in the layout in order to accommodate some additional parking. As you can see on the plan, the existing building has frontage along Washington Avenue. The rear, the property's actually kind of deep. The rear of the building has, in the lighter gray, you can see on the colored rendering here, the parking and maneuvering area to the rear of the building. There are docks along the rear side of the building. There are some aggrae docks. There are also some full-height docks for trailer trucks. What we're proposing to do is to provide some additional parking along the rear of the site. As Jay mentioned, the back of the property is subject to shoreline zoning. It's within 250 feet of Moses Creek. That blue dashed line that you see on the rendering is that 250-foot mark. The item that we talked to you about back in early December was with regard to a condition of our project site location permit, which was issued back in the 80s. And there was a line on a divided plan, because this is actually one of two lots, that was divided out in the mid-'80s. On that plan, that line at 250 is referenced, that there's a note on there that nothing can happen beyond that. And it is believed, based on our discussions with code enforcement early on in the process, as well as our initial conversation with DEP, which I believe you probably remember we talked about at the last planning board meeting, that that line actually predated shoreline zoning, the mandatory shoreline zoning act. And so the shoreline zoning act kind of took that over in that process. So as Jay mentioned, we are consistent with the current zoning, which is shoreline zoning, but we do need to do a minor revision to the site location permit for the project in order to remove that condition of approval. That application was filed in mid-December, on December 16th. We have not, as of today, still heard back on that application request. We have talked to the project analyst a few times about it, but we don't have anything more to give you as an update at this point. And that is unfortunate, but unfortunately, that is where we are. But we'd like to proceed with the local review, recognizing that we are consistent with the shoreline zoning, and that when our first meeting with the DEP, this is characterized as a minor change in something that has happened actually on other projects that have predated the mandatory shoreline zoning act. So with that, we'd like to proceed and move forward with the local review, and understand certainly that anything that would move forward would be conditioned on receipt of that revision approval from the DEP before we could do anything construction-wise on the site. So as Jay mentioned, there were a few items that were identified as part of the site plan review comments at the staff level and peer review level, one of which were the two parking spaces, which are located in this area here. There are actually two parking spaces there now. The plan shows them just angled a little bit differently. What we are proposing to do, in recognition of the fact that there were staff comments about whether we could eliminate those, we had considered it, we had taken a look at it. Honestly, the 50 spaces are exactly what we need to have for the plan, so loss of those two spaces would not be an option. But what we would like to do is to note that they would be employee parking, so that there wouldn't be, there's a couple of employees that we expect would be there quite early in the day, and that they would be there, and it wouldn't be a high turnover type area for that. So we would designate those as employee parking spaces, but we would respectfully request that we be able to keep One of the other comments that was raised was with regard to lighting. We have, in our initial comments that we received from staff at the sketch plan review, we were asked to give consideration to the building-mounted lighting to look at upgrading any of the fixtures. What we are proposing to do is to upgrade the building-mounted fixtures around the front and the sides of the building, so that those would be new fixtures. On the rear, and Jay's just pulling up that picture, I sent Jay a picture of the rear of the building and a zoomed-in shot of the three fixtures that we would like to keep at the rear of the building. Those are, as you can see on the backside, they are facing a wooded area. We are in an industrial district. And with the ability to keep those three fixtures, we avoid the need to have to put out any pole-mounted lighting to light the rear parking areas of the site. So we would like to be able to maintain those. As you can see on the detail, it does have a bit of a shield on the top, but that was what we would propose to do for those three fixtures. As I said, the other remaining fixtures on the buildings would be updated for that. As Jay mentioned also, we are respectfully asking that the board give consideration to the elimination of any dumpster enclosure. We do have a dumpster pad area located right in that area. In talking to the applicant, what we'd like to do is actually, the plan shows it as 20 by 30. We'd like to actually make it 24 by 30, just to give a little bit more room for the dumpsters themselves. And we are respectfully requesting that those not be enclosed, given the setting and given their location at the rear of the site, surrounded by wooded area. So we'd like to not have those fenced in. The comments that we received from Woodard and Kern as part of the peer review, as Jay mentioned, there was some detailed information that they'd like us to provide for them to talk a little bit about the treatment at the outlet. There is an existing piped outlet that discharges into Moses Creek. It was built in the 80s, when the original building was built, and it picks up runoff from the rooftop and the rear loading area, and it discharges out to the creek. We are proposing to stabilize that outlet. It needs some repair work in order to make sure that we're not getting any sedimentation down into the creek. So as part of our plan, we called that out, that we were going to provide a ripraped outlet in that location, and as part of Dave Sinis' comments, he asked for a little bit further information on that, which we'll certainly work with him to provide for that. With that, I think we'll turn it back to you folks if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. We do have the opportunity for a public comment on this before the board discusses it, if anyone is interested. Come on up. All right, seeing none, we'll turn to board discussion then. And I just ask folks, since we have a couple of waiver requests here, that in the course of your comments, you could just indicate kind of where you are on that, and you can have the ability to change your mind later if you want, but it'd just be helpful to get a sense of where people are on those. Robin, would you like to start off?
Okay. So specifically regarding any restrictive deed and covenants, I'm also wondering, Nancy, if this will include any covenants or conservation easement for the wooded buffer that's being proposed?
That was one of the comments that Dave Sinis had raised in his comments as well. The wooded buffer that you see proposed on the site will be part of a, there's D-language that restricts that area as part of it, and that is consistent with the DEP's criteria for that.
And could you just link to sort of where it starts there, Nancy? Is it all the green?
Yep. This area right here, that is the level lip spreader, and the area down the stream of it is 100 foot long, a little bit longer than it goes on there.
Speaking of the level lip spreader, in looking at the maintenance inspection log provided, I saw the wooded buffer, but I didn't see the level lip spreader for long-term maintenance. I could be looking right over it, Nancy.
I thought it was in with the outlets. I think it's included in the culvert outlets.
On the details?
In the notes for that, the checklist in the maintenance plan.
I don't see it included in our.
Yeah, I included it in culverts and pipe inlets and outlets.
Culverts, inlets, and outlets.
It's on the inspection and maintenance log. It is the third line down.
Yep, yep, I got it here. Mine just says culvert and pipe inlets. I don't see level lip spreader called out, but you know, I would assume that it would mean, you know, looking for no preferential pathways, like no rilling and gully and things like that.
Correct.
Okay. So where I'm coming from, I guess, Nancy too, is understanding that the Town of Scarborough is an MS4 community, and with that, there are certain, you know, sort of cautionary, you know, sort of roles that the town has to take with respect to receiving oncoming or incoming drainage to their MS4 ditch lines and things like that. So I'm wondering, one of the requirements of the MS4 permit is to do long-term post-construction inspection, like you have going on here, but I'm wondering if you have any insight as to who might be doing the inspections for the landowner, if it will be you, or it will be the landowner themselves?
There are some projects that we do have for the landowner that we do the inspections. They also obviously have some very clear connections with folks who are well-versed in the erosion and sediment control measures, being certified as erosion and sediment control contractors. So there are other options for that, but we had specified in there that there is a requirement that there be a person designated moving forward with that.
Okay. And I guess, one other sort of, I'm wondering, I guess, as far as the inspection log is concerned, if, I'll table that for now. How do you plan to address Dave Sinis' questions regarding the, getting to the erosion at the outfall, without, you know, sort of matting down the earth and those types of things?
The outfall is just, when they originally installed the line, you can't really see it from the plans that the aerials provided, but this line comes in here, and it's pretty flat and pretty navigable right now to get to that outlet. It's just it drops off over the edge. And I really believe that as part of the improvements, that it can be done sort of over the edge, if you will, without getting down into the more sensitive areas. If you look at where that outlet is on this colored rendering, you'll see that the areas that were identified as wetlands are quite a distance away from that outlet.
Okay.
And so I'm confident that we can do the stabilization that we'd like to do right at the pipe outlet, and then if there's any areas that are down beyond that, to.
How will you get there, though?
It's flat. It's flat out to this area here, which is the dry side. And then out in this area here, it drops off outside of the immediate outlet. If there's anything that exhibits any further erosion, the installation of turf reinforcement mat, I think, would be a good solution down going over the edge there.
So are you proposing any special measures, then, to address what Dave said about recommending ground pressure, small or low, you know, impact ground pressure equipment?
I think Dave's comments were really more focused if we had to get out into the wetlands, and we're further up above those wetlands, we're sort of on the side of the bank. So that was my interpretation of his comments.
What's your schedule for construction?
I'd like to start early in the spring.
Okay. So maybe the ground won't be frozen, so it'll probably, and if we're in a shoreline zone area, it could be kind of mucky?
That particular area where we're looking, I don't expect it's going to be mucky. If we were further down on the slope, it would be, you know, something that we'd be concerned about.
Okay. But you plan to fully address Dave Sinis' comments there?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So you said the timeline for the work is spring. Who do you anticipate the contractor being?
Rizberra Brothers.
Rizberra, okay. And so they'll be responsible for doing the erosion and sedimentation control. At what point? At what point? Well, one of the things Dave Sinis also asked for was the location of the stabilized construction entrance. So have you identified that?
Well, that was one of the things I wanted to talk to Dave about. Because this is an existing paved site, to actually do a stabilized construction entrance really doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense. I mean, the construction entrances are based on, you know, if you're in an area where you're potentially mucking up an existing road, then you would have those. But we have quite a distance within the site that's already paved before we would be doing anything to potentially impact Washington Avenue. So we had shown saw cut locations for where we're going to tie into the edge of pavement, but we hadn't proposed to do anything for stabilized construction entrance because there was a significant area within the site that's already paved.
So if we're still going to be mucking, so in the back forty, will there be like a proposed sweeping plan or something, so before construction leaves the site? If you're going to use the existing impervious area for, to basically collect all the sediment that comes off construction vehicles and the like? It would seem to me that if you're going to use that place to collect the sediment or to have the sediment drop before you get out on the road, that you would need to sweep that then before the construction is done. So has that been considered?
Well, in the general erosion and sediment control plan, there are provisions for making sure that we don't get any dust or sediment onto the street itself. That's part of the program. And I typically leave that to the contractor, especially in a situation like this where it's so limited, that they would be able to maintain their site on a daily basis.
Okay. So no stabilized construction entrance and no sweeping program?
Well, there is a sweeping program. It's in the ENF.
Where is the location of the grubbing stockpile going to be? I noticed that in here you talked about doing some grubbing and maybe some beneficial reuse of the grubbing materials potentially used as erosion control mix in the, according to the DEP standards. So just wondering where the grubbing stockpile will be?
I would anticipate that that would be happening. And about in this, when we're proposing the dumpster pad, as I mentioned, it's kind of open and flat in that area. So that would be a good logical point, so we can, you know, work within the confines of the new paved area, but we're not too far out off the edge as well.
It talked a little bit about de-watering. You may need to encounter some de-watering during construction. What is, you know, and I think it said you were going to use a dirt bag or something like that. Would it be possible for the contractor to let staff know when de-watering happens?
Absolutely.
Because we have, I think we have, I'm just thinking MS4 process here, because, you know, as far as the MS4 is concerned, de-watering is, you know, an illicit discharge. Construction entrance is also, could potentially be an illicit discharge. And the dumpster without an enclosure could also be a potential illicit discharge. I'm wondering also, did you get a chance to provide Dave Sinis or staff with the existing conditions plan that was requested?
We can provide a separate, it's on the plan itself, but it's kind of hard to see because we're sort of just expanding on the perimeter. You can see from the color up here.
Yep.
The existing condition is the lighter gray on the edge of pavement, so that's already there on the site.
Oh, I see.
The building, obviously, we're not changing. So it's the additional pavement at the rear corner and the drive lane along the side. We can certainly separate those two drawings if you would like.
So there was also a question about how long the level lip spreader should be, 50 feet or 30 feet? Was that clarified?
That was my mistake.
Okay.
It needs to be 30 feet. It is, and that was my mistake, that I typed it in at 50. The calculations demonstrated at 30.
And where will snow storage be?
We had provided for snow storage on the backside of the site in the parking areas, I believe, and I don't remember off the top of my head where that might be.
How can we avoid it? I mean, do you feel like it would be in front of the level lip spreader, and do you see that being problematic?
No, I've already talked to the applicant about that.
Okay.
That it can't be in the level lip spreader. So it's basically, we're talking about.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Roger? Thanks, Robin.
Are we on the same?
Yes.
Okay. I actually don't have too many questions. The only comments I would make is regarding the dumpster and the enclosure of it, personally, I don't think that's a big issue because of the, where the site is and, you know, where it's going to be located. It's an industrial park, so I don't think that's really, from my point of view, a necessary requirement. And regarding the parking, those two spaces, I think you explained why you need those. I would think if it becomes a safety issue, the owner of the property or whoever's operating the business would realize that and take some considerations as to that. So I don't, I'm not too concerned about that either. Otherwise, I think most of your other concerns have been addressed, or the concerns have been addressed, so I don't have anything else really.
Okay, thanks, Roger. Ron?
Yeah. I got a few things. My esteemed colleague down the other end certainly did the MS4 in great depth, so I don't have to go into that at all. But I have a question for the chair. In the past, this board has not given final approval without final DEP approval. And it seems to me that they're still working out there. DEP's okay. Am I wrong?
I think what's different, and staff can certainly jump in to help articulate this better if I don't, but I, my understanding is that the difference in this case is that there is some local authority and just given the circumstances and the sequence involved, that it's kind of a different situation. But Jay, maybe you could.
Sure.
Lay that out a little bit better in terms of how this is different from the precedent we've had in the past.
Yep, I think there's a couple of things going on. Typically, what the board seeks is certainly before, if there's an application that's a new site, a green site, hasn't been developed before, and there's a new permit to be issued by the DEP or DOT, the board typically waits to have those in hand before doing any approval. If there's an amendment to an existing permit, the board will, would like to typically see that amended permit in hand, but depending on the scope of the project, sometimes the board will provide a condition of approval that a, an amended permit be provided to staff prior to the start of construction. In this case, it's not actually a permit per se that we're talking about. Typically, what we're looking at is a stormwater permit or a site location permit. Here, what we have is a DEP condition of approval, in that no on the plan talks about, and I can pull it up if the board likes, but generally it says there's to be no disturbance of the area that's behind the, I think it's called the buffer zone on the original plan. And that really is the extent of that resource protection line, as was already talked about. So in this case, our local ordinance will, essentially on this property, there's a deed covenant. There's someone holding a deed restriction, the DEP saying that you can't do this work. However, our local ordinance allows for it. There's, in my experiences and discussions, there's sort of two lines of case law when it comes to deed restrictions on a property and the board's responsibility and role in that. And I think depending on which attorney or who the attorney's working for, you could sort of, I think until it gets before judge, it's really hard to know which one will really truly be prevailing. But, so staff's interpretation in this instance is that this is a, this is a private covenant on the property. Yes, the DEP is the holder, but it's still, they're still a private party. They're not, our local ordinances would allow this, barring this discussion of that condition of approval. So staff would be comfortable, if the board's comfortable. We believe that, you know, that the board would have standing to provide a condition of approval that if you're so inclined, that the applicant work through that, you know, eliminating that deed covenants prior to starting work. You know, if the board's so inclined, you know, to want to wait till that be resolved, I think the board, there's a track of case law that would say the board can do that as well. So I sort of laid that at your feet, but as I said, staff, you know, staff is prepared to support the board, and either way you go with it.
That's helpful. Thanks.
I don't mind, I just want it in the draft motion. I mean, I don't want it just to slip by. I mean, in playing devil's advocate, if all of a sudden the DEP says no, for whatever reason, you know, and then it gets into a court thing and so forth and so on, which I don't anticipate, but it's still like it is as a condition on the draft motion. I'm also okay with the dumpster not being enclosed because of the location. And I also go along with the parking space situation. Going back one step in, when the work is done, one of the recommendations of Woodard and Curran, and that might have been covered, and I'm just going to reinforce it, is that small, low ground pressure, I mean, the least disruption, I guess, I'll put it in simple terms, as is humanly possible in getting the job done. I think that is important, even within the location that it's, that occurs. So I want to stress that also, that reinforce what Woodard and Curran had said on that. Beyond that, I think I'm okay, because the other issues were well-covered by my colleague. So I'm all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, excuse me. I'm okay with their waiver requests. I would, the lighting, is this, I mean, I haven't seen the full lighting plan, is this what they're asking for the exemption for, because it butts woods and, you know, the cutoffs, basically? Yeah. I guess my only thought on that would be if somebody complained, that they'd be willing to put in cutoff lighting. We reserve that right, but just have it in there. I'm also the same thing with the dumpster. If we start to see debris floating down the river, we reserve the right to ask them to put something in the back of it to catch anything blown out that way. But that would be my only two comments on those. But other than that, I'm okay.
As a point of order, picking up on that last comment for staff, when the board grants a waiver, and it turns out to be some sort of, you know, for lack of a better way to put it, an enforcement issue, is that something that is just implicit in the approval, or something that would have to be clearly stated? I mean, it would seem to me that anytime there are any sort of nuisance complaints, that the town would have the ability to.
Not if the board, the board has the ability to waive the site plan review standards. I think if the board grants that waiver, then you're essentially saying, okay, the applicant's demonstrated evidence that they're meeting our standards and we're comfortable with the proposal. The town doesn't really have the ability to go back to someone to say, well, yeah, we, I know the board allowed you to have these lighting fixtures, but really, you need to now have cutoff fixtures because your neighbor complained. If the board has a concern, you could ask the applicant to provide a full photometric plan if you want to see more detail. But no, that's, it's really not an area that the town, that we can get into. I think that'd be an overstep, I believe.
I think the appropriate language, though, could remedy that. I mean, not necessarily grant a waiver, but as a condition that they would agree, the applicant would agree to change it, whatever nuisance down the road. That's just a thought. I think language can solve some of those problems.
Okay. Robin?
So I just was wondering, our options are to grant a waiver as is with no cutoff lighting in the back, or to disprove, or disapprove of it as is? I'm wondering, are there other options? Because to me, coming from the perspective that I have, is that lighting isn't necessarily just for neighbors, it's also for habitat, and it's also a cumulative effect in the town as far as, you know, the glow. Living over on, you know, Pleasant Hill, we can see the glow of Oak Hill, our Oak Hill neighbors. So it seems like redevelopment would be the time to get the lighting up to the standard. So I'm just, as a new, as a new board, you know, planning board member, I'm just trying to understand what the options are. Approve as is, or what?
I think the options are that we would either grant waivers, one or the other, or both. And that to the extent we did not grant a waiver on a certain item, that item we could list as a condition. If you take a look at the draft motion that's in front of us, C and D are both, that's a draft language that we would use if we were not granting one or both of those waivers.
Can I have a question, just in light of that? Would you repeat why, again, I know you did, but it went right by me, why you don't want to go with the full cutoff fixtures?
We are proposing to retain the three existing fixtures on the rear of the building in order to avoid having to place pole-mounted lighting to provide lighting on the outside edge of the parking area. So those three fixtures would be sufficient to shield light from the building to illuminate those rear parking areas. If we put those on to the newer fixtures, which are proposed around the sides and the front of the building, then what will happen is we'll have to put pole-mounted fixtures out there to provide the illumination necessary for the parking area back there. So what we would like to do is we'll upgrade around three sides of the building, but those three fixtures, which you see the photo of, we'd like to keep on the back of the building and then not put any additional lighting out back off the edge of pavement.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate your question about that.
Like I said, I don't really have a problem with it. I was just hoping to reserve a right somewhere down the line that if there was ever a complaint about it. If it's a waiver, it's a waiver. I'd go along with the waiver.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. Mike?
Generally speaking, I don't have any problems with the proposal. As far as the light fixtures go, I appreciate the interest in not having to construct full lighting. My interest would be if they're looking at, the only thing I really have to go on is the neighbors, the budding properties, and if that would impact their property line spill over at all. And I don't have a photometric. We don't have one, right?
We provided some information on the lighting. It was for the new lighting around the front side. I don't believe there's anything new along the back.
It looks fairly wooded, not only in the back, but also along the sides.
On what would be the southerly side of the site is all wooded. Obviously, the easterly side is wooded off the edge of pavement. And on the northerly side, there is some woods, but there is a parking area adjacent to this area right here.
And would the lighting be 24/7?
No.
So it would cut off?
Correct. We'd put it on a timer so that it would be off after 8 o'clock at night.
So no security issues or concerns in that regard?
Basically, we wanted to be able to, if there was a, there was a meeting held in the evening hours, that there would be light, you know, you're talking about wintertime conditions when you've got, it gets dark at 5 o'clock. Just the ability to have that while folks are still there in the building.
Right. Well, with that additional testimony, if you will, I would be in support of waiving the full cutoff in the back. As far as the dumpster goes, it's kind of like along the same lines. We, you know, myself in particular, I think about enclosing dumpsters because they add to the aesthetics of a particular site. But my colleague brought up a point that I hadn't considered, is about, it also contains any kind of debris that might escape the container, you know, from finding itself either throughout the property or maybe all the way to Moses Creek, I don't know. Is there any feedback you can give me on? there any feedback you can give me on why we shouldn't have an enclosure for that reason?
I don't, you want to?
Good evening. Rocky Risbera. The biggest part of not wanting to enclose those dumpsters, for me, is our use. So we're going to have room there for about three 30-yard roll-offs. And those roll-offs are used, we come back to the shop, our trucks come back to the shops and shop, and they'll have things that need to go into the dumpster. And so we'll back in beside the dumpster and by hand take it out of a van and throw it into the dumpster. So we're, access to those dumpsters and being able to juggle those dumpsters around. As one gets full, they come in, pull, you know, drop a clean one, pull that one out. So the access is more important than anything for us. As far as keeping it, you know, from blowing into the wood line and whatnot, I mean, that's something that, you know, we have to maintain. I think a lot of you are familiar with our site right now, and our intention is to move that company down here. So the dumpster that's on Route 1 in front of the Town and Country Center building will be gone. But that's something we constantly have to maintain, and, you know, occasionally it gets blown over. This is actually a much better situation than we have now because we'll have more than one dumpster, and so we shouldn't get to the point where it's full or overfull because we're waiting for a dump the next day. So to me, it's more of a maintenance, you know, it's up to us to keep it clean.
And obviously, if it did end up being an issue per se, that would be, I would imagine, a violation of one or more of our codes where additional discussion and remedies might be brought up at that time. So for that purpose, I too would be in favor of granting the waiver for the enclosure around the dumpster.
Thank you.
As far as the two spaces go, I appreciate you labeling employee parking only. Is there any reason to literally put a sign up for that purpose? You're not going to have?
That'll be Bill and Ron. They're at 6:00 in the morning.
So signs that say parking's for Bill and Ron only?
It'll work.
But it's not, this isn't a retail type of thing. We're not having people that drive by and pull in and find a spot?
No, we have people come to the office, you know, daily, occasionally, and we have a lot of late afternoon or night meetings where there might be a meeting at 4, 5:00 at night, lasts an hour, hour and a half. So we do have some people coming, and that's, we primarily see the parking in the front of the building used for that. Employees will park, you know, off the sides or out back. Sneaking those two extras in, that, you know, they're there now. It's just we're reconfiguring the angle. It just made sense for us to try to keep those because we can put two employees there and it just, it works.
Okay. As far as the DEP condition of approval, would, if the board was to elect to use this draft motion and offer the waivers, either as written or a variation thereof, would we consider adding an additional condition that speaks of waiting for approval of the DEP amendment of the conditions?
Yes, and actually, this is something I had a little sidebar with Jay earlier. Item number two, under the conditions, actually does address that.
It does, okay.
And I propose that we just insert from the DEP after the word evidence in the first line so that it's clear that that pertains to that.
That's what I wanted, yeah. That's what I wanted.
All right. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, then I'm in favor of the draft motion with, and the waiver on the dumpster enclosures and also the full cutoffs in the back, and also agree with your suggestion that we insert DEP in item number two.
Thanks. Robin, did you have something else?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just want to ask about the new proposed use. And I know, Rocky, you were talking about it being your offices and things, but having 200-yard roll-off, that doesn't seem like regular office buildings. Can you just talk about?
30-yard roll-offs.
Say it again?
30-yard roll-off.
Oh, 30-yard roll-off. I thought you said big, long, 200. Okay, good. Thanks. And then I'm also wondering, too, if, are the back loading docks going to be used at all?
They will, yes.
Occasionally.
Okay. And so what type of materials are we talking about coming in and out? I'm just thinking of the catch basin. That's right there. Will it be liquid at all?
We're not moving our construction company there.
No, 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 no. But what's coming in the building?
I thought you were worried about dump trucks and whatnot. So it's, they're not, you know, the loading dock won't be used a lot. I mean, occasionally some wood materials, box materials.
Paper goods, consumer goods.
Paper goods, those kinds of things.
No bulk materials or anything like that? Okay. And then last, is the deed and covenant for the forested buffer separate from the deed covenant that's being referred to in number two?
That is correct. The wooded buffer will be a new covenant that will be put on associated with a proposed buffer.
Right.
The covenants that are being discussed, I haven't seen the suggested motion, but those covenants that have been discussed are with regard to the existing permits that were issued.
Okay. So there is a separate covenant that should be forthcoming, too, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to add. That hasn't been covered already. I'm pretty happy with where we are at this point. In terms of the lighting, I appreciate Robin's comment about the cumulative effect of lighting, and I think that's a good thing for us to always be mindful of. It's not always just who the immediate neighbor might be. But I think, given the clarification that we got around the hours of the lighting and the fact that if they were to go to a full cutoff, they would intend to add two pole-mounted lights that would at least partially offset that benefit. So I think, given all that, I'm comfortable granting that waiver, and likewise on the dumpsters, given the additional information and context that we have. And then similarly, I'm okay on the parking, given the limitation to employee use. So without belaboring it any further, I will put a motion forward. I move to approve the application of M&amp;R Holdings LLC for proposed site plan amendments to 6 Washington Avenue with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the start of construction, the plan shall be revised to address comments in Woodard and Curran's memo dated January 25, 2016. Number two, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide evidence from the DEP to the Planning Department that any restrictive deed covenants as depicted on the plans recorded at the Registry of Deeds, Book 170, page 6, have been legally extinguished. A plan note documenting the modification is to be added to the site plan sheet. Number three, prior to the start of construction, the plan shall be revised to address items related to (a) revise the plan to include the town's standard site plan notes and to identify the amount of coverage in the shoreline zone overlay, and (b) modify the parking layout to eliminate the two spaces at the northwesterly corner. Move that we grant the following waivers. Based on the site characteristics, plan details, and zoning context, the board waives the requirement for a dumpster enclosure and utilization of full cutoff light fixtures on the rear of the building, and revised plans and documentation are to be reviewed and approved by planning staff. That's the motion.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. Going back to what Robin said, there are two separate issues as far as covenants and deeds that I think need to be languished out.
I think the other one is integral to the plan itself, right? I mean, it's not a separate, it's not a separate outstanding.
It's part of the materials that they submitted, and so it becomes, it's part of their documentation, part of their presentation. So it's a requirement. The conditions are typically items that are, slightly differ from what's in the applicant's materials. So within the applicant's materials, there's a discussion about a deed covenant in that area, as I recall it. So that is, that's just a requirement that staff doesn't believe needs to be made as part of a condition.
Okay.
A quick question on that. Does the deed just that one page, their entire deed to this property, just exists on that one page?
No, that was just a reference to the plan, the subdivision plan. So that's...
Okay. So it's one page long?
No, their deed is longer than that. What I was referencing here was just trying to call out what it is specifically that we're trying to amend, and it's this condition as shown on, I'll zoom out. This is the subdivision plan signed by this board in 1987 that has that DEP condition on there. So what this note was intended to demonstrate was that the applicant needs to work with DEP to provide our department that the restrictive deed covenants as depicted on this plan, not how they're recorded. I haven't actually seen where they're recorded yet, and that's, I haven't done that deed research because it hasn't seemed necessary at this point. We'll wait. It's the DEP's covenant, not the town's.
I guess my question would be, is, I understand a catch ring reference. I just don't know if it's best to just remove the book and page number. I don't know if that would be, because if you go to the Registry of Deeds, you get a book and a page number. I don't know if it's, what I'm saying is I don't know if it's necessary to list that book and page number. I just, the restrictive deed covenants as depicted on the plans recorded at the Registry of Deeds have been legally extinguished. Now, I don't like whether, if I had evidence to the planning department, that any restrictive deed covenants as depicted on the plans have been legally extinguished. You're what the problem we've identified be eliminated. The wording here sounds, "Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide evidence to the planning board that any restrictive deed covenants as depicted on the plans recorded at the Registry of Deeds have been legally extinguished." Well, I don't think you have to get rid of all of the restrictive covenants, just the one that's causing the construction issue, correct? I think the language is very sweeping in that statement. So I would rather see it li, you know, what is it exactly? That's, I mean, what's the verbiage there that we're trying to get rid of?
It reads...
You see what I'm saying?
Where?
The way this is, this reads right now, it sounds like asking them to get rid of all restrictive covenants.
Yep. And this is the only restrictive covenant identified on this plan page. I can zoom out. We can zoom around it if you'd like. There's a couple of notes over here.
So there's no other restrictive covenant language in there?
On this page.
On that page.
That's correct.
Page 6, it says.
Okay, I'm good. Sorry.
No problem.
Well, I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would just like to ask the applicant to confirm that the wooded buffer conservation easement and covenant has been completed and submitted?
We had reference to it, that it would be in accordance with the DEP standards, and that's referenced, I believe, in the application materials or the erosion settlement control plan. I can't remember off the top of my head where it is, but we did reference it.
Specific recorded restriction? Has it been recorded?
Not yet, no.
And has it been applied for?
It's not an application that we would need to apply for as far as placing the covenant on the plan. We would be happy if that would, if the board would be wanting to have that be a condition of the approval, that that covenant be recorded. We would do that.
So basically, if I can sort of provide some input as to where I'm coming from, I work in conservation on a daily basis, and the stormwater rules that will apply to the site plan amendment by using a wooded buffer, which is the best treatment. So thank you very much for doing that and preserving it. But what this potential conservation easement would do would make sure that that stormwater treatment is there in perpetuity, meaning that that stand of trees that's providing stormwater protection and prevention for this property will stay there. And there is methodology provided in Chapter 500 to go forth and put that covenant on to the deed as well. And it is a separate item. So, and if it's something that we haven't addressed before, maybe we, I don't know how to put it in there. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments?
It seems to me, if I may, you've read the motion, and you've read the conditions. It seems to me that Robin has an amendment to the motion.
Well, that's, is, are you proposing that?
I am proposing, yeah.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
No, I apologize. I needed a little help here. I'm going to Planning Board Boot Camp tomorrow night with Roger.
No problem.
So I do, you know, to comply with Chapter 500, if DEP hasn't required them to submit it as part of the site plan amendment process, I would request that the applicant pursue that thoroughly to protect the wooded buffer.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you, I've been trying to draft up some language. I think if you'd be so inclined, I'll make sort of two comments. I think where staff had drafted comments and conditions based on sort of everything that was in our staff comments before the board's discussion, the chair read number 3B to talk about the elimination of the two parking spaces. However, I heard as part of the discussion that board was generally okay with keeping those. So I might suggest that we modify 3B, eliminate what was previously read into the record, and replace that with, provide a copy of the recorded conservation easement for the wooded buffer to the planning department. Essentially, that would require that to happen prior to start of construction, which needs to happen anyway. So I think that covers the base that we've been talking about.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Paul.
I'll second the amendment.
Well, the amendment should be made by a board member, but I appreciate Jay's.
I'll second the amendment.
I will put that in my back pocket for now. Just as a point of order and for the record, I propose that we amend this motion to strike the previously read provision B for modifying the parking layout, and that we replace that with the new item B, which would be that the applicant provide a copy of the recorded conservation easement for the wooded buffer to the planning department.
I second the amendment.
That's the amended motion.
Well, he seconded the motion.
I think Rod has bits on that. All right. So we have a seconded amended motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
In favor of the amendment, correct?
All in favor of the amended motion. Yes.
They get a vote on the motion. We just approved the amendment. That's all we just did.
All right. We've approved the amendment. All in favor of the motion?
As amended.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Larry Scarborough, Inc., requests site plan amendment review for 14 Washington Avenue, assessors map R62, Lot 15. Jay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a interesting, how these two lined up on the agenda because they're very similar. The applicant is before the board to expand a parking field in a previously developed site within the industrial district at 14 Washington, yep, 14 Washington Avenue. The proposed development pattern is consistent with the industrial district. However, it does require the board approval for a site plan, through the site plan review ordinance provisions. We'll note that this site, though subject to shoreline overlay, none of the proposed development is actually occurring within the shoreline overlay district. So that's one major difference here. Given the site characteristics and the material submitted by the applicant, staff really had very few comments. We did address, again, as we talked about before, light fixtures. And I know the applicant, I believe, is prepared to talk about that with the board and demonstrate what's out there. Woodard and Curran will also provided the board with staff comments principally concerning, the principal concern that was raised was has to do with the location of snow storage and be sure that snow is not pushed into the stormwater facilities on site. Outside of that, staff was generally comfortable with the proposal and has prepared a motion for the board is so inclined. I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn it over to the applicant. My name is Norm Chamberlain with Walsh Engineering. We represent Larry Scarborough, the applicant. They are the tenant in this building. They are the tenant in this building. It's a pretty simple site plan. We have an existing 13,000 square foot building that they are renovating to provide office space, laboratories, and resources, research and development. Most of what we're here for is they, the second phase of their development is to fit out this rear part of the building and with that they're going to be going from about 15 to 20 employees up to about 50. So, we had to add parking. We're providing much more parking than we need, but it was the way the site was configured. Also, what we're doing is we're raising the parking lot. Right now, there's about a 18-inch elevation difference between the ground outside and the, and the building and we're picking that up to help with frost action. This is a very flat area with high groundwater and so adding 12 to 18 inches of gravel should help some of that. Plus, it allows us to manage our stormwater a little more effectively. We're doing that with a underdrain grass soil filter right here. It allows water filter down through it and it will discharge into the roadside ditch. It also provides some detention and we provided a stormwater report that shows that in most cases it does reduce peak rates runoff below existing for, for all except the 25-year storm where there's a very small increase. As Jay said, we're outside the 250-foot shoreline zone, which is back here. As far as snow storage goes, we're proposing to put that in the parking lot there so it's outside of the stormwater management areas. Lighting, we submitted a lighting plan with our application. It included some revised, some wall packs that were not submitted, but we submitted them this morning and they, they were the ones that were used in the lighting plan. And effectively, the lighting plan shows that there's little or no spillover onto adjacent properties. There is a little bit of light in the street, but it's, it's fairly negligible. So, I think we, these are all new LEDs, so it's all, you know, nice, energy efficient. Everything's pointing down. I think it'll be good for the area. Our plan does not require to meet main DEP stormwater requirements, but we designed it to that. It also, we are over treating what we are creating. So, the, the original plan, I think, was created sometime in the 80s. We're treating about 150% of the new impervious that we're creating. So, we're, we're kind of over treating, but we did have room to do that. So, that's about all I have. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. With this item, as with the last one, we have the opportunity for public comment. If anyone has anything to say on this? Looks like no, so. How about you, Ron?
He's covered most of it, but in the staff comments, a town engineer was mentioned and I'm wondering if she's comfortable with everything.
Yeah, I think Walsh Engineering did a great job meeting with us early and coming in with stormwater. We talked about it and what could provide. I think they did a good job of saying this is kind of what fits into the site and actually treating more than really what we were really looking at getting as much as we can out of it, and I think they maximized it for this site.
Thank you.
So, I was very happy with that.
You did mention, and I'm going to address this to Jay, that you're going to have more parking spaces than you actually need?
Correct.
How many more?
We need about 50 or 60. We have 74. It was kind of the layout of the site and we're also thinking ahead. There, there may be some additional phases to this project at some point in the future, but they're not part of this application.
Okay. I'm not hearing any outcry. I'm, I'm fine because I always, I come from the standpoint that I'd rather have them now than come back later. So, I'm okay with that. And you mentioned the snow storage out of the stormwater area and in the reports that I have, I don't see anything else. So, I'm, I'm okay, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Nick?
Yeah, very complete application. Nice. You have a request in here. My, it's my only comment. You have a request for a traffic study waiver in here.
Get it?
And I am satisfied with the waiver request.
Thank you.
You see, you need the industrial park to see how many more cars are going. That's what I have.
Thanks, Nick. Mike?
Yeah, that was my comment too, the request you have for waivers. So, that was, that would, I would think be a part of any, any motions that we would consider tonight. Can you, can you give me a little background as to why you believe that, first of all, how many additional employees is this going to result in?
Currently, there's 15 to 20. I don't know how many was there with the previous use, but with this development, there'll be about 50. So, I did an analysis in my report. Fortunately, it's over there. But my recollection is that, you know, we talked about the peak, peak trips would be well under DOT's 100 personal car equivalents. So, we didn't feel that there was going to be a need for a traffic study based on that. Plus, they have staggered hours. They, employees arrive anywhere from 7:00 to 8:00, 8:30. So, you know, it's not like everyone's showing up to punch a clock at, at 7:00.
But there's a, there's only one shift?
There's only one shift. It's, it's research and development. So, you know, people get tied up with what they're doing and don't leave at 5:00.
Okay. I guess, I would, I don't have a lot of reason to say, to object to your waiver, but I'm kind of on the fence about it also because I'd prefer to have some kind of synopsis about the original traffic study or the original analysis so I could kind of interpolate as to what this might.
I'm not sure there ever was one.
Okay.
I guess that would have to come from Jay if there was the original application. That was the mid 80s, wasn't it? Something like that?
I didn't come across anything in the file. You know, the whole industrial park was a subdivision that the town worked on or the, so it's really been, the properties within the industrial park in this area aren't subject to our traffic impact fees and that would really be ostensibly what we'd be looking at in this regard. If this were a new site, I think it'd be maybe a different conversation, but whereas we have an existing site and the impact fees are waived, staff was pretty comfortable with their proposal was.
So, at the end of the day, you're only adding 10,000 more square feet of impervious service?
About 15,000.
About 15,000. Now, with a, with your pen or, or finger, all of that gray area is actually going to be reconstructed?
That's correct. There's, there's nothing out here and the existing parking lot only goes to about there.
Okay.
And so, we're pushing out.
So, that'll be all brand new and then more.
Correct.
All right. No further questions. Thank you for the complete package and appreciate the, the presentation.
Thanks, Mike. Roger?
Thanks. I, I don't really have a problem with the traffic impact analysis to waiver on that either and the explanation that Jay gave us for that. And I think it's a very complete package and nothing really stands out to me that, any red flags or anything like that. So, I don't have any further questions.
Thanks. Robin?
Yeah, I just commend Walsh Engineering for doing a great job. I think this package was really great and encourage you to, if developing again, reach out to the staff like, like you did before. I know that's really what it's all about.
Always.
Good job.
Thank you. Likewise, I commend the applicant for, for providing a complete application and engaging with staff and also thank staff for working with the applicant on that as they, as they always do. So, and I don't think I have anything else to add. I think any questions I had have been addressed by my colleagues. So, with that, I will move to approve the application of Larry Scarborough, Inc. for proposed site plan amendments to 14 Washington Avenue with the following condition and waiver. Condition is that prior to the start of construction, the plan shall be revised to address staff comments related to snow storage. The waiver is that due to existing development and proposed activity within the industrial park, the board waives the requirement for a traffic impact analysis. Revised plans are to be reviewed and approved by planning staff.
Second. I'm going to second it.
Second. Do we have any discussion on this one? No? I don't get to amend anything? Now that we have the process staff? All in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, Jason and Wendy Glode, Sotero and Alicia Giftos request a subdivision amendment of the Foster Farm subdivision plan, assessors map R47, lots seven and 701. Jay?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, board members will recall the sign from a few months ago. It's before you had the sketch plan. To start with a little background of the site, the original subdivision for Foster Farm was created in 1999 or was approved in 1999. The Giftos property was identified as lot one of that subdivision and the Glode property was an exempt homestead lot of three and a half, a little over three and a half acres. In 2004, there was the first amended plan of the Foster Farm subdivision, which actually wound up splitting the Glode property thereby creating lots 19 and 20. At the time of the original subdivision, the sub, the property, all the properties were in the RF district. The property is now in the VR2 district. The VR2 district states that for lots that are in a subdivision that was approved prior to 2005, which all these lots are, the space involved standards of the R2 district shall apply if the lots are served by sewer. And that's sort of the critical component here. Board members will recall, we have Foster Farm 2, which was recently approved within the last year and a half or so by this board, just up Broad Turn Road, which is where the Habitat for Humanity folks are building their subdivision. And they brought a sewer line up Broad Turn Road, which has, which left stubs for, I believe it's four stubs that have been left for this. So, the applicants are looking to take advantage of that proposal. So, the staff noted, one of the things that will be important that occurs is to ensure that these lots, these currently conforming lots, because they're currently on subsurface or onsite disposal systems, subject systems, they need to meet the RF standards or be at least 80,000 square feet. So, prior to any land conveyance, which would make them smaller than 80,000 square feet, the existing house lots need to be connected to sewers. So, that's just a point that needs to be made clearly. Let's see, when we saw the sketch plan, other items that the board discussed were regards to site access and particularly regarding the new lot on the Giftos land, the board was interested in ensuring that access was limited to Saratoga Lane, which the plan depicts. Addressing stormwater issues, the Giftos property, as I mentioned, was part of the original 99 subdivision approval, which had a storm, overall stormwater permit. The applicant has reached out to the DEP in terms of amending that permit. The response they received from the DEP is, "We'll take it sort of as when you're ready to develop that property." The DEP is going to review their grading and drainage plan and provide an amended permit at that time. And staff has provided some language as a draft condition that the board might want to consider if you're comfortable moving forward tonight. The Glode property wasn't subject to that DEP stormwater permit. Staff, in, in the materials, there didn't seem to be much in the way of any stormwater considerations. Had conversation with staff, the town engineer regarding ensuring that that, those issues are looked at. And so, we drafted a condition that consideration to its grading and drainage plan be reviewed and approved prior to issuance of a building permit for that lot. Again, that's an item the board might want to consider. Staff notes that we had a few other sort of administrative type notes. I know the applicant had responded to me earlier in the day and I believe he's, has addressed these to staff's satisfaction. I'll leave it to him to sort of address those for the board. But with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn over the applicant's representative.
I'm Matthew Eck from Tobago Technics here representing Mr. Giftos and Mr. Glode, who are also here this evening if the board has any direct questions for them. Just a couple of questions or a couple of comments after Jay's presentation. The existing homes on lot one and on lot 21, or lot 20, sorry, have already been connected to the sewer lines. So, I was informed of that. So, I had suggested a note on here that they be connected prior to any building permits being issued, but they already have been connected to the sewer and the sewer stubs have already been created for both of these proposed lots. The access, as you mentioned, we have, as the board requested, we've limited the access on lot 22 right here on Saratoga Lane so that any vehicles parked, not parked, but at the stop sign at Saratoga Lane waiting to turn onto Broad Turn wouldn't be restricting someone from turning into their driveway. And we don't expect very many vehicles. Certainly three or four vehicles would fit there without blocking a driveway in this area. It also limits that there'd be no, no driveway on Broad Turn here. As we discussed before with the board, we would have a driveway on Broad Turn for this lot as there's no other road frontage available. And we have looked at the grading on this lot, not having a house to design yet. I've heard the board's concerns with that and, and we are acceptable to having a condition of approval be that they would require a grading design prior to or at the building permit process. So, I think that's addressed most of the comments that the, that were addressed. We have added some information to the plan just to clarify, labeling the, the buffer limits that were on this side of the, of the subdivision as well as labeling and adding a note regarding the buffer limits on the other side. They were existing prior to and will be maintained as such. And we had a calculation error on the net residential calculations, which has been corrected. It, it, we had shown that it was allowing seven lots in this area. It's only allowing six, but we're only having four total anyway. So, it was just a lot size being the net residential allows 20,000 square foot or half an acre and I'd use the 20,000 square feet rather than the 21,000 and change for the half an acre. So, if you have any questions for us, we're here this evening to answer those.
Thank you. Once again, this is another item on which we have opportunity for public comment. So, if anyone would like to come on up, this is your chance. Looks like we do have someone.
Yes, hello. My name is Henry Catador. Some the abut to the property, which is, I think, property 20.
Would you mind giving your street address just for the record?
61 Broad Turn Road. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
And basically, I don't have any concern with it being a building lot or anything like that. The only concern I have is drainage for that lot. And I just heard some discussion going on about a site plan would have to have some drainage for that lot, which makes me a little bit happier. But the reason I'm here is to point out that we've owned that property since 1990. Actually, my wife was there before I was. And when they put in the development, lot number 19, when that specifically was built, the houses built, they cleared the field that was there and basically we had a huge water problem. Such that it eroded underneath our driveway all the way up to the garage. Excuse me. We had to replace the, the driveway and we had to put in a lot of fill and actually put a ditch there all the way out to the road ditch. ditch there, all the way out to the road ditch, to divert the water that was coming in, to the tune of about $15,000. And my concern is, again, drainage, lot number 19, which is budding our property, that's a very low area. And I would think that would have to be built up to put a house on it. And I see a similar situation going on there as what's happened, you know, in 2005, when the other property was developed. So I don't know what, you know, I don't know exactly what I can do to, you know, comment on it or anything else like that. I'm just here to gain some knowledge and find out what my options are, so I can avoid this from happening again, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
So would I have to wait till the property is sold and then a site plan is discussed as to how they're gonna, you know, where they're gonna put the house and what they're gonna do to the actual property as far as the grading goes and whatnot before I would comment, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll have some discussion here at this stage about drainage, drainage planning. But yes, typically, I mean, this is the subdivision approval.
Sure.
Stage, so we're not quite into.
The property premature, but I, based on the expense I went through, I want to make sure.
Definitely not premature to raise it as an issue and through the board will be sure to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do want to also note that we got an email dated February 19th from Bruce McIntyre, who's also in a butter at 1 Saratoga Lane, who similarly expressed some concerns about drainage. And that's, everyone on the board has that through staff. All right. Moving on to board discussion, Mike, would you like to start us off on this?
Sure. A last conversation. We talked about, I guess, through the chair to Jay, last conversation we had, I think there was something about the lot 20, the Glode property, as far as any kind of loose ends, compliance issues, et cetera. Has that been rectified?
Jay can elaborate on it. My understanding is that those issues have been addressed, or that code enforcement and staff visited the property and determined that there were no violations.
Okay. Well, it looks like everything's been addressed for the most part, I guess, all things that I recall on our first conversation. Pleased to see that you have highlighted where the driveway access to the proposed lot 22 would go. And I see that that is represented by 91.59, that is the distance there, anywhere within there?
Yes, and they're showing the two leaders to designate it on the plan as well.
Okay.
And the note that goes with it.
And I see the easement, they've already hooked up the sewer, so.
Yes.
Is there any other, is there any kind of, I guess, that easement allows for crossing, will allow for crossing over with the driveway, of course?
Yes, yes, that certainly, they were still on the property as an easement for utility purposes.
As far as the drain, I recall this issue with, forgive me if I mispronounce your last name, Caradouris, and lot 19, as far as it relates to the, for lack of a better term, the unauthorized clearing of this area. Is, what if any measures can you take to ensure that this no-cut buffer line is well demarcated for the new owner, for lot 21?
The property corners are proposed to be set, anything that is missing, the 50-foot buffer can easily be measured from those as it is on the rest of the subdivision.
I'm afraid, you know, I appreciate that, but I'm afraid that it potentially might not be enough, because I think that's what we had for lot 19. So I'm wondering if there might be something a little bit more, more prevalent, more of an announcement, such as maybe some sort of temporary type of fencing of some sort to make sure that construction doesn't impact that area.
It would be odd to have fencing required to protect a buffer. I haven't seen that anywhere else.
I think you misunderstood me. I'm talking about maybe temporary fencing, such as something like that orange plastic fencing during construction.
Oh, during construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly don't see a problem with putting that restriction on. My client isn't proposing to develop it himself, it would be a future fire.
Sure.
But we could certainly put that restriction on there, that they would be required to.
Because it's not, it's not really clear. I mean, there's not like a natural line of some sort, whether it be trees or otherwise, it's just really, it's really hard to, it's indistinguishable from the rest of the lot for the most part. This area, there's no cut buffer area.
Well, that would be part of, you know, what I assume the board may want is the grading plan. It would be laying out the building, showing where the proposed grading and everything is going, and certainly, we wouldn't be proposing any grading within that buffer area.
Right, of course.
So at that point, we, you know, we or another surveyor could lay out stakes along that, so they could put a fence up. But it would be reasonably easy to measure from the property corners as well being 50 feet.
Right.
So whoever did it, if it's a contractor laying it out, they could certainly still abide with a board condition to put up some temporary barrier.
The abutters spoke about having an opportunity via reviewing or seeing the site plan analysis or, for lack of a better description, when lot 21 is built. And that's not really going to be the case. I mean, we're here to approve this amended subdivision, and then from there, that lot would be sold and construction can begin once they have permitting in place. So I don't know if there's any way that the grading plan can be shared, not just with this body, of course, and the planning department, but also with the abutters.
As a condition of approval, if, you know, as what I believe that Jay was looking for is that the town engineer would need to review it as part of the building permit process. I'm not sure if that, if at that point, they would share it with the abutters. I mean, it is all public knowledge once any building permit is submitted.
So maybe not so much for the applicant, but maybe for our, for our purposes, for the planning department, if we could maybe make a note to go out of our way to contact the abutter and let them know that that has been submitted and it's available for the review. Would that be unyielding?
I worry about the nuance of that being picked up. We don't typically note, when building permits are submitted, we don't notify abutters of that. So I really think it maybe goes back a little bit to discussion, it's sort of incumbent on the board. One of the conditions is that subdivisions, you know, has no adverse impact on abutted properties.
Good.
So I guess the question to the board would be, are the materials yet submitted that give you that confidence? Or are you comfortable with the condition that that type of issue would be picked up as part of a building permit process through our town engineer, as at least it's drafted as a condition right now? You know, we can always try to do our best, but I, you know, I think that's a bit of a nuanced condition that I.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, I think it's just important that we have the conversation, so you know exactly that one has to pay attention and stay involved. And if you have an opportunity to comment, then feel free to do so. I don't mean to have a one-on-one dialogue with you, but just that, just stay involved, because these documents will be submitted. Presumably, we may approve them tonight as a part of the condition, and the planning department will ensure that they meet our codes, which is, like Jay says, it can't impact any abutting properties. So I don't have anything more to say. I'm glad to hear that the, that lot 20's been cleared up and that, did you say both lots have been hooked up already, or?
Yes.
Both have?
Both existing homes, yes. And the proposed lots have been stubbed.
Okay, excellent. And the driveway for lot 21 will obviously be on Broad Turn, but for lot 22, it'll be on Saratoga.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Thank you. And thank you for the point of clarification or correction on the nature of the subdivision approval. We have so few residential subdivisions approved these days that we're a little rusty. Nick?
I think I have anything to add to this.
Okay. Ron?
Yeah. Clarify for me, on lot 20, the existing lot, are there two buildings or one, right now?
It's, there's a barn and a house.
Okay, that, it was the barn, okay. Now, my second question, lot 22, how close is that? And I see some of the, to the Bowser's property, which is the budding property. Where the white spaces, that's the Bowser property?
Yes. This property is the Bowser property. Lot 22, about that.
Okay. Is there any buffer between those two properties?
No. The, there's a portion of the property, you can see the dash line here, that property was conveyed to the Bowser property from the original subdivision.
Okay, but again, the, where it says lot 34.45 in the Bowser property, is there any buffer there, or is that all open space? I'm not familiar with it.
There's no proposed buffer, as in the no-cut wooded buffers that are elsewhere in different parts of the subdivision.
Well, you have to go to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Hello, I'm Sotero Giftos, I'm the owner of 2 Saratoga Lane. And currently, there is a row of, I guess I call them pine trees, completely from the street, from the Broad Turn side all the way down around the side of. There's an L-shaped row of trees.
All the way from Broad Turn? Here? And then over.
Good. I guess my concern would be the concern of what we heard and the letter that we received, and that is the running off as the construction takes place. And that's what I'm driving at, that there'd be no disturbance of the existing homes that are there while the construction takes place. Go ahead.
This lot would be subject to the DEP approval and would need the grading plan and whatever DEP standards need to be met, whether that be a rain guard and et cetera. So that would be addressed in the DEP approval of that individual lot, once an individual house plan is chosen. So it's premature to grade the lot, not knowing what house is going to be built on it.
Have you been down there? Yeah?
Just during the sewer construction, yeah.
I mean, that's just, I mean, I'm, it's just way out of my league, but I'm just concerned in visualizing it, that these existing structures, and if we're, if what I heard was true, that originally was done, there was already one big problem with drainage. What's to convince me there's not going to be another one now with the construction that's going to take place?
I know that corner is open, because that's where the sewer stubs went in. And then, I guess I'm not sure, I do remember the row of trees that you're referring to, but I'm not quite sure about the grade of the land, and that's more what you're referring to, is how the runoff goes. And I can't really speak to that. I mean, it's been a little bit since I've been out there to really look at how that would have drained. But it sounds like what they're proposing, they would need to come forth with a grading and drainage plan for DEP, so it would have to be addressed.
Okay, that makes me feel better, and I want that in. Thank you, thank you.
Also?
Yeah, thank you, that clarifies it for me.
Roger?
Thank you. Actually, I think Mike answered a lot of the, or he dealt with a lot of the questions. As I recall, the first time, there were these miscellaneous issues with your property, I think, and then there was a concern about where the driveway was going to be on lot 21 and, and it seems to me, everything's been, is pretty much in order. I do have a question on the no-cut buffer, I guess. Is that just a strand of trees, or what is that, you know?
The no-cut buffer.
This stretch of.
Does allow for removal of dead or dying trees. And you can replant trees in that area, but you can't go cut any living tree, you can't mow the area. It's meant to be a natural vegetative state.
Okay.
But if there, you are allowed to plant trees in that area.
Okay, all right. I guess I don't really have any, I mean, it seems like everything's been answered for the most part.
Okay. Thanks, Roger. Robin?
Yeah, first, I agree with my colleague of the idea of putting a construction fence in to specifically, you know, delineate where that no-cut buffer is. I think that would be extremely helpful. And second, can you give us just a rough idea which way the surface water will flow off the sites here? Since we don't have an existing conditions plan, I think.
The surface water in general right now is flowing, you can see the direction of the arrow, is flowing generally that direction. Lot 19 is flowing basically back, so they had some wet area back here, I understand. We didn't survey off onto that property at all. I'm not sure where this area is flowing, I haven't done the topographic survey work for the, for any drainage plan yet.
So the need to keep that no-cut buffer is obvious?
Yes.
You know, with the stormwater going directly to that 50-foot block?
Yes, but any regrading or berms or anything required or ditching would be outside of that 50-foot buffer on the lot itself.
Perfect. Do you, or perhaps this is from Mr. Giftos as well, is there an established or an anticipated proposed timeline for the development of any of these properties? Or is it just being developed for, at some point in the future?
I believe Mr. Glode's is just up for sale at some point in time. I'm not sure if Mr. Giftos has a exact plan or not.
The current plan is to, is to bring my mother and stepfather in. I don't have an exact time just yet.
Okay. Thank you.
My next question would be for staff, maybe Jay, if this neighborhood, if there's an opportunity for stormwater master planning at all in this, you know, if this subdivision keeps going, kind of a thing, is this an appropriate place to do some sort of neighborhood stormwater planning, or no?
I'll look to my stormwater expert, who I typically look to these times, and see what Angela has to say.
Well, I guess, coming forward with this application, it was the first I've heard of really the drainage issues out there. And if there, it sounds like isolated to some low points, that I'm not sure if they were not graded correctly from the original approval plans or not. That's something we can kind of look into, however, the houses are there now. So all we could do is really making sure that it does not get worse and it doesn't direct more runoff that direction. I don't know how much, how many more lots, I guess, along this stretch, I think is what you're going to now get divided, because now there's sewer. And if there's other drainage issues along that stretch, I know there is a pretty deep drainage ditch that runs along Broad Turn Road that conveys quite a bit of flow. And we had some work we did with some erosion in fixing that. So I think it's in, it's in pretty good shape, so if we could get water directed to it, I think we're good. I'm not quite sure as far as going above and beyond that, that might be necessary at this point.
That's good enough for me, I'm fine, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape here. I thank the applicant for the responsiveness over the last couple of months in tying up some of these loose ends and working with staff on various things. To pick up on a comment by Angela, our town engineer, I think it is an important point to make periodically in situations like these, that. to make periodically in situations like these, that we don't look to sort of the next applicant through the door to solve all the pre-existing problems, so while it may be regrettable that certain abutters in certain situations might have existing water issues, as Angela put it, well, what we're looking, what we're looking to accomplish with any subsequent development that's proposed, is that we not make it worse, and that we certainly take any opportunity that might be there to try to improve it if we can, but it's not something that we can really require. That said, it's something that clearly now is there on the radar with the engineering department, and I think I have confidence in trusting that grading and drainage design and approval process to the applicant in conjunction with DEP and town staff. I also agree with the suggestion that we include a condition in our approval here for providing construction fencing delineating the no-cut buffer area during construction. Beyond that, I think everything has been pretty well addressed, and I think I'm prepared to put forward a motion. So I approve, I move to approve the application of Jason and Wendy Gloud, and Sotero, and Alicia Giftos for proposed subdivision amendments to the Foster Farms subdivision with the following conditions. Number one, prior to issuance of a building permit for Lot 22, the following must occur: A, the existing home on Lot 1 shall be connected to the public sewer; B, copy of the amended DEP permit shall be submitted to the planning department; C, a traffic impact fee in the amount of $3,299 shall be paid; and D, a recreation contribution fee in the amount of $500 shall be paid. Condition number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit for Lot 21, the following must occur: A, the existing home on Lot 20 shall be connected to the public sewer; B, a grading and drainage plan for the site must be submitted to and approved by the town engineer; C, a plan note reflecting condition 2B is to be added to the plan sheet; D, a traffic impact fee in the amount of $3,299 shall be paid; E, a recreation contribution fee in the amount of $500 shall be paid; and F, prior to construction, construction fencing shall be laid out to clearly delineate the no-cut buffer area. That's the motion.
Should that be on both, or just one, you've attached it to Lot 21, should it be also attached to Lot 22?
The, the traffic impact fee?
No, the fencing. No, just 21?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Impacting. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
I appreciate putting in the construction fencing dub, but it should be clear that, of course, this is only required during the grading, construction, manipulation, if you will, of the lot, and the building, and then it would be taken down.
During the construction period.
Yeah, it's not meant to be.
All right.
It doesn't need to be set, I would imagine, but that was my intent.
Sure, sure. I think that's what we were trying to accomplish, but we can make that more clear by adding the word temporary?
Okay.
So we have a...
Well, I, I would like to make an amendment to your motion, Mr. Chairman, that the word temporary be inserted into two F, to more clarify the intent of the construction.
Okay. There's a second? Any discussion of the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? The amendment is approved.
Back to the main motion.
I would now put forward the main motion as amended.
My understanding from the email earlier, the traffic impact fee was to be split between the two lots, and I think the way it was read in the motion, it was to be paid on each lot in full.
It was my intent to split the number, and I believe I did that, unless I, let me...
Yep.
Yep. Let me make sure we have the numbers right here. You are correct, I, yep. Sorry?
What happens when a planner tries to do math?
That's right.
1648.
15, 1649.
1649. 1649.
Actually, the number, when I look at, let's see, what you guys just come up with?
164950.
Because I might have just messed those numbers up completely, so let me just do this. So the two impact fees, one is for Dunston Corner, two trips, each trip at 1402, which is a total amount of $2,804. Higgin's Parkway has one trip assigned to it, total amount of that trip is $990. When I add those totals, divide it by two, it should be $1,897 per each lot. That's if I could pick up my apologies for however I messed that up. The original number was 3794? The original number?
Yeah, he's 3794.
2,804 plus 990, $3,794.
Yeah. The number was wrong altogether.
Time for me to catch.
Good catch.
Propose an additional amendment to reflect the corrected amounts as 1,897 per lot?
It's the 500 for both, each, two, is that, that's for each of them, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second for that amendment? All favor of that amendment? All right. I'd like to put forward the original motion with the two amendments, which have just been approved.
I'll second.
You have a second on the amended motion?
Original.
All in favor of the amended motion? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Put me through your paces, Robert Rules, tonight, buddy.
Yes. Robert Rules and Division.
If you need that, you can go ahead.
Just for the record, I consider myself a planner, too, so.
Between her and me.
All right. We have a town planners' report.
Yeah, the one thing I just want to make mention to the board, and I believe we sent you an email, and I might have mentioned it in our last meeting, we are going to conduct a workshop prior to our next meeting on March 14th. It's going to be, to begin a discussion around the town's desire to get stormwater capacity, so we will be issuing stormwater permits, and having more local control over that process, so we won't have to concern ourselves so much with going to DEP and, so, but that's, we're going to have that workshop, as I said, prior to our next meeting. At 6:00 PM, we are inviting folks from the Conservation Commission, and some other committees as well, so it's really the beginning of a discussion of an effort that's been ongoing for some time, and we want to start to, staff wants to start to have a more broad discussion with folks as we start to consider this, so.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, and we will send out an email, and be part of, on our agenda, so.
All right.
Thank you, Jay.
That's what I have.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add?
Yes.
I'm not a town planner, but can I add?
I'll allow it.
Okay, thank you. Also, two days later, on the 16th, we'll be having a council workshop, which planning board members will be invited to, will be talking about our MS4 requirements that we need to do annually, so it's always good to brush up on what Robin's talking about earlier, on what we are required as staff to do, and what the town, what that means to the town, so we'll be educating council and planning board members are also going to be invited.
We'll get notices on all this, right?
Yep.
Will that be, did you say, is that 6 o'clock as well?
That's what church week is. That is, yes, that's an hour before council as well, March 16th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Administrative amendment report.
Have one item to report on. We, working with the board chair, approved some minor modifications at Camp Ketchum for a, an arts building, basically it's just sort of a shell of a building that's still used during the summer months for their campers to do arts and crafts, and there were some other smaller adjustments. They have a storage container out there, right now, they keep hay in, they're going to do a nice little open shed type area to store the hay, so a few modifications like that at that site, but that was approved, and that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Any correspondence beyond what was already noted this evening? Yes, thank you, Ron.
Let's say here.
Pass that over. We did receive a letter from Scarborough Free Baptist Church dated February 5th, 2016, in relation to the proposed non-such brewery, and just if I may paraphrase, sort of wanting to set the record straight about any potential discussions of utilizing their parking lot for any overflow or valet parking, and they're stating that that has not been discussed, and the church council had recently voted against any such provision. So we will keep that in mind as that process goes forward. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Any planning board comments?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, because that was the first question that I asked, was, and I was told straight out on the record, that they had discussed valet parking with the church, and according to the letter, no such discussion was ever had, and I, I have a problem with that.
That's for me. All right.
I do want to have one other thing. We have another transportation committee meeting tomorrow night, so we will report back after that at our next meeting.
Thanks, Ron. Any other comments? I'd just like to say that it's, it's been stated before, but it's nice to have town engineer available for some of these meetings, and to have a new board member with the sort of expertise on conservation and stormwater that Robin has, so those are definitely assets, particularly given the nature of a lot of the projects that we see, a lot of conservation subdivisions, and things of that nature, so that's great, and with that, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.